7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Board Room. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present at this time. I will ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is President's Report. I don't have really anything to report tonight, so we can then go to the next item, which would be the Appointments for Historic Preservation and Board of Appeals.
Make a motion to approve the Appointments for Historic Preservation and for Board of Appeals.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve the candidates? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Next item is Announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, and department reports. We'll start with committee reports and committee chairs with Trustee Zabel.
General Government and Finance met earlier tonight, and we will meet again on July 20th at 7:00 PM in this room.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Kaminsky.
Public Works will meet in this room on July 1st, which is a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Trustee Miller.
Public Safety's next meeting is Monday, July 6th at 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, or department reports they'd like to bring forward? Nothing else? Then we'll go on to next item, which is Citizen Input and Public Appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, but if there is anyone in the audience or online that would wish to come forward for citizen input and public appearance, all I would ask is to state your name and your address for the record. Anyone wishing to come forward for citizen input or public appearance? Right. Appears there is no one, so we'll go on to Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items. Any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Old Business. We start with Old Business. Item A, Revisit or Rescind a Portion thereof of Resolution 42-2020 Adopting the Washington-Ozaki Public Health Department's Blueprint for Reopening for the Purposes of Village Operations Following the End of the State's Safer-at-Home Order. You going to start with an update and go from there?
Yes.
Now turn it over to Village Administrator.
Do you want a clicker? Do you want the clicker for that?
Yeah. Is, um, I have a couple of slides. Actually, I thought they were, um, they were on the WebEx site, that that was being shared, but I'm sorry. I went to the wrong computer. All right. Thanks. Um, well, this doesn't seem to be coming up here. Here it is. Okay. There we go. All right. Thanks. Just a, just a quick update and then a question to put before the board. First of all, and I guess when we have these conversations, I'd like to, um, I think if we could get the next slide. Um, I don't think this is being controlled by the clicker. I think it's being shared by WebEx, so, um, let me, uh...
There, wait, be one second.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks. We have our, there we go. Uh, we have our, Michelle is on, online, advancing the slides for us, so...
Person behind the curtain.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so just first, a quick update on where we are. Two weeks ago, I made a presentation to the board. We were at the top of the spike that you see on this chart with, um, the, by far the most cases that, that Washington County had had in any given week, and an increase in the number of cases in Germantown. Since then, we've seen a, a decline in the number of new cases. Um, I should just point out there, we were down at nine for last week, however, we did not get the final report for the end of the week. Normally, we'd get that on a Monday afternoon, but it hasn't come through yet. But, but either way, it looks like, um, like there is a decline in, in the number of cases, and hopefully that continues into the future. So, um, on the next slide, there's a question that was raised to me that I thought was appropriate to bring back to the board, and that's the consideration of the, of the mask policy and what, how we want to handle that. And I guess in relationship to that, how we want to handle going forward, both the Village Board meeting and as well as, um, as other commissions and committees. Um, and I'll start with just an overview of the current policy. When, when it came before you in May with the County Health Department's Blueprint for Reopening, and that was adopted by the Village Board, and as part of that, it, they recommended the county that, um, uh, in settings where social distancing is not possible, like we're in right now, where we're within six feet of each other in an enclosed space where we're talking, that in those situations, that individuals should wear masks. And I think at that, at that point, the Village Board made the decision and the direction to Village employees that, that we should wear masks in those situations to try to help protect the, the public. And obviously, there's, there's multiple viewpoints on the wearing of masks, and anybody who has a Facebook page sees that out there on a regular basis. The, the question came up at that meeting, does that policy apply to Village Board members? Village Attorney responded that no, Village Board members are not required to, to wear masks at, at these meetings. In addition, the question came about the public, and, uh, we do have signs posted asking visitors to Village Hall to wear masks, but they are not required. So there are some alternatives that are available. I've talked to a couple of other Village administrators to see how they're handling it. In some cases, the villages, communities have, have basically rejected the County Health Department recommendations, and they're, they're going a different direction and, and holding meetings as they, they normally had in the past. In some other cases, the Village Boards have reconfigured their Village Boardrooms to hold the meetings, but they're able to accommodate social distancing. That might be a little bit difficult in this situation. In our room, we could possibly extend the dais and spread people out a little bit more, but I'm not sure that would work well if we're trying to also allow for people to participate remotely. So, um, those, those are options that we could look at and go in that direction if that's the, the desire of the Village Board. Some other factors for consideration, um, we do have some Village employees and, and potentially citizens who, uh, on the, on the, in the case of Village employees, are required to or need to be at meetings. In, in the case of citizens, they could be just individuals who would like to attend for whatever reason, who are in high-risk categories, and that's something to, to keep in mind. It also is possible, and I haven't heard of this happening in any communities yet, but I think it's, at some point, it's possible, if not likely, that either an employee or a resident would request a reasonable accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And if that was the case, that could change the, the calculus of this decision as well. And then the final thing that I would say as the, as the administrator and the person responsible for implementing whatever the policy is, that I, I do think it's important that we have consistency in, in what we ask employees to do. And in addition to Village Board meetings, there are also, um, you know, the multiple other Plan Commission or other committee meetings, Board of Zoning Appeals, et cetera. Not, I would say the majority of all of the members of those committees and commissions generally seem to be, have a high level of comfort in, in, you know, in attending meetings without, you know, significant safety protocols in place, but there are some who are more concerned about that and, uh, and have expressed that as, as we pull those committees together. In addition, we also have staff, when they're interacting with the public outside of these meetings, we ask them if they're, if, if they're within six feet, that then they should be wearing masks as well to protect the public or, and, and, you know, if nothing else, to give the perception that we're working to, to protect the public in those cases. So I think just having a consistent approach and a message that we can give to Village employees is, is helpful in making sure that, that there's compliance and that they're carrying it out. So those were my thoughts and remarks as, as that's a, a question that the, you know, the Board has the opportunity to, to review at this point tonight if you would like.
Trustee Wing.
Oh, look at that look. All right. I think I'm probably responsible for bringing this forward to you.
Not completely.
Partially, at least.
Partially.
Um, here's my issue. If any employee ever wants to call me, please do so. Any employee in the Village of Germantown. I wish more of you would. Some of you do. Call me. Tell me what's going on. Tell me what you think. The morale of our employees is important to me. I received word that some of the employees weren't too happy to come to a meeting and have to wear face masks after a law was passed by this board to give the administrator the right to create a rule that the employees have to wear masks. We knew before the vote that Steve was going to pass that rule. I brought it up, and that's the reason I voted against it. Yet everybody on this board, with the exception of Jolene and me, voted for this. You voted for the employees to wear face masks, and then we come to a meeting and none of us wear face masks. I don't expect Jolene to wear one, and I'm not going to wear one. I didn't vote for that. But imagine, if you will, that in your office, the boss says, "Everybody has to wear a face mask," and then he parades around the office without a face mask. What is your feeling on that, boss? It's not right, and I agree with the employees. Furthermore, I wanted to see, okay, we're following this blueprint. I look up meetings all over the place. I go to Menominee Falls, and nobody's, you can all go online and look at their meetings, nobody's wearing a mask. The employees aren't, the trustees aren't. I go to West Bend, nobody's wearing a mask. Funny to me, this is Washington County's Public Department Blueprint for Reopening, so you'd think Washington County would be wearing masks. Nobody's wearing a mask in Washington County. I looked at the last two meetings. The first meeting, only the mayor of Hartford, who's also supervisor, was wearing a mask, which was hilarious to me because he's the one that told all the businesses they could open, when the police department there was telling all the businesses they couldn't open. So that's, that's been a, a fiasco from the beginning. He's the only one sitting there with a mask on. The police are coming forward. They're not inhibited by a mask. We're trying to listen to what they're saying. It's frustrating for me to see us all sit here without a masks, and we're forcing our employees to wear masks at public meetings. No one else is doing it. I think we shouldn't.
Further input? Trustee Miller.
Well, just a comment on that is that I didn't vote to tell them to wear a mask. I vote, uh, I voted to give the administrator discretion over his employees to wear the mask. It wasn't about us saying yes or no. I'm not going to wear a mask. However, it's up to him, it's up to the administrator to say what the employees will do. So I don't think we should take that away from him.
No.
That's Steve's call.
I understand that, but before the vote, we asked Steve, "Will you make the employees wear masks?"
Right.
And it was understood...
When he's ready to rescind that, then it's finally me.
And we understood that they were going to have to wear them in front of us. So yes, we didn't force them to wear masks, but essentially, you did indirectly. Again, I say to you, if the boss of your company gives the safety guy the right to make a rule, but he says, "Ah, the safety guy made a rule, you have to, when you're using that machine, you have to put a safety in there." But when I use it, I don't have to. It's wrong. Now, the owner of your company could say, "Hey, I'm the owner. I'm in charge. You don't own this place." We could say that. Well, we're elected. We don't have to do that. We're, we're above these rules." I don't think that's appropriate. If we think the employees need to wear a mask in these boardroom meetings, then you should be wearing one also.
Trustee Kaminsky.
I, I agree. I think it's up to our village manager to make that decision. It's his call. He's the boss, and he happens to be wearing a mask. And I think the comfort level of a lot of people, especially older people who come into Village Hall, appreciate the fact that you're wearing masks. And honestly, without it being a rule, if everybody really thought it was, if all the Village people thought, they'd be more comfortable if I wore a mask, they'd be happy to put one on. You know, will I wear one if I don't have to? No, I won't. But I do think it's our village manager's call. I'm comfortable with it as a stance.
So based on that statement, next meeting, are we wearing a mask or are we not wearing a mask?
I think that's up to our village manager.
No, us.
I, I think it's up to us individually because we don't work for the village.
It should be up to the resident, uh, the employees individually.
Yeah. I will not be wearing a mask. But seriously, I mean, I, I think it's the same as it was last week, the week before, the week before that.
Now I'm getting a better idea of why the employees feel the way they do with morale. I'm getting a clear, I'm getting a much clearer picture now. I'm amazed at the comments that are being made and, um...
I can't believe morale depends on a mask or not wearing a mask.
That's just...
If that's a morale issue, then we really have a serious problem.
Well, it would be for me as an employee to hear my boss say, "I don't have to follow the rules, but you do."
But the boss is wearing a mask.
No. There's a, there's an organizational chart, and above him is you.
Yeah. I don't work in Village Hall. I do not work under a village manager. And I understand that a lot of people have a much, a bigger comfort level coming in, standing across the counter, two, three feet away, paying a bill, you know?
I'm not, I'm not talking about the counter. I'm talking about the meetings.
I'm talking about everything. Why would you switch it one for the other? I mean, it's up to him, not us. He's the boss.
Further comments? Trustee Zabel.
Well, I'm, I'm not one who likes masks, and I don't see the use for them, but I noticed what's so funny is that even when you go out to the general point of view, you have a few stores that require you to wear them, then you have a few stores that, that don't have, that you don't have to wear them. Place I went today, they checked your temperature and had you sign a piece of paper, and everything was fine, but (laugh) so I, I'm not sure. I'd have no reason to wear a mask. I don't believe in masks, and I'm one of those people that (laugh) I don't think they do anything like the, yeah, as the Surgeon General said, he says, "The only thing that mask does is protects the person who's talking to you, not you." So long as I'm aware that I don't have anything, I see no reason to wear a mask. Now, if I did test positive or whatever, and I'm, you know, then I would require myself to wear a mask, but long as I don't have the symptoms or do it, I would not require that I wore a mask.
I'll make a motion to rescind the county's Health Department guidelines on masks. Let's start with at Village Board meetings. Any Village Board meeting.
All Village Board?
All Village Board meetings.
Like Plan Commission?
Yes. It is your choice as an employee. If you want to wear the mask, wear the mask. If you don't, you don't. So my motion is to rescind it for all village-wide meetings.
Committee meetings.
Committee meetings.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Think we had it.
I see the point, and I understand where Trustee Wing is coming from in regards to, you know, do what I say, but I'm not going to do what I say. Don't follow, you know, I'm not going to follow the rules that I'm laying on you because I'm, I don't want to do it. So I, I get that point. To me, it's a perception where some people at the dais are and some people aren't, and it gives that, um, that perception that, uh, that we're above it. I, I don't care for that. I think if one wears it and, uh, and we voted in that regard, then we should all wear it, even if we voted against it. Because in most cases, if it follows, there's, there's other rules, there's other, there's other types of resolutions that, that maybe I didn't vote for, but still have to follow. There was a very wise man that said on this dais that said, "Sometimes the vote isn't going to go your way, but then you need to look at which way you can make it work best for the village." And you should, as a trustee and as a board member, work in that direction to, even though it is not the way you wanted it to be, you still need to look at ways to make it positive and, and work for the village. And I believe in that very strongly. So if we would choose to go forward with the mask-wearing, then next board meeting, in fact, maybe even at this board meeting, I would put the mask on. So, but I do understand Trustee Wing's point of view. Trustee Baum.
I probably voted for this originally because I didn't know much about this. I didn't understand the whole virus. Now that I've been out there and been around and started to experience it, I, I personally am taking my own responsibility. When I get into a more crowded place with people who are hacking and sneezing, I'll put on the protection. Those stores that you talk about that have the sign, "You have to wear your mask," I don't shop at them anymore. So I've become comfortable with, with what I'm doing, and I think everybody is an adult here. You can make your own choices. If you're not feeling comfortable, then wear the mask. If you're feeling comfortable, take it off.
Further discussion? Trustee Miller.
Yeah, this, I guess it's for the administrator, and, um, you know, right now, the power lies in you with pending this vote, but what is your feeling on this, and when do you think that you would remove the requirement for a mask?
Well, you know, I guess my, my feeling on it, and, uh, you know, first, let me say, if you would have told me six months ago that I would be sitting here, first of all, wearing a mask, secondly, having a public policy discussion about the wearing of masks, I, I wouldn't have believed you. Um, I, uh, you know, in my, in my personal life, um, you know, I, I react to things much like you've all described. You know, if there are some stores that I go to, um, that, that ask people to wear masks, I'll put a mask on, but generally, I'm, I'm not wearing, I don't want one at home. I don't wear one when I'm, I'm generally out and about. But I guess when I look at it when I'm here at work, um, you know, we're here as, as Village employees to serve the public and to serve all of the public. And, um, and I, I guess I look at it in terms of, um, uh, there are, for people who don't believe masks are necessary, um, it, they, I don't think would feel uncomfortable coming into Village Hall and seeing us wearing masks. They might think it's funny or, or goofy or whatever, and, and I certainly understand that. However, there are people in the public, there are residents of Germantown who have business in Village Hall, who don't feel comfortable being in Village Hall without, um, without us wearing masks. And I think like a business owner would, that if you want your customers to feel comfortable, um, and they would, then they would feel more comfortable and willing to come in if you're wearing a mask, then, then we should wear masks. You know, if the, if the Village Board decides tonight that, that it's more appropriate to make it optional for those meetings, um, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. Uh, I'm not going to get upset about it or anything like that. I would continue to wear one as long as we're requiring employees in their interactions with the public to wear one. So I would continue to do that because I, I do feel like if I'm asking the other Village employees to do something, I need to, to do that myself as well. You know, I think, I, I'm not sure when this is going to end. I think at some point, we're going to get through this and, and back to something a little bit more normal, and hopefully, there won't be a need to, to, to wear the masks any longer. I, I don't know exactly when that's going to be, but, uh, you know, for the time being, uh, you know, I guess because of that, I, I would continue to wear one, and, um, and I think it's, when we're interacting with the public as Village employees, we should do what we need to do to make sure that, that the, the members of the public are, are
Further discussion? At what point, and from whose recommendation would stop the mask-wearing, even in Village Hall? Where would it come from? The county as well? Because we've seen the number go down to as low as it is now, even based on where it was close to 70 and when we're down below 10.
From what I've seen with the county and the way they're handling the, the blueprint, they're generally following the CDC and the, um, the State Health Department, the State Health Officer. So when, when they're making changes to guidance, um, when CDC or DHS makes changes to guidance, they usually update that in the blueprint. So I think as, as maybe there's more understanding about, there still is debate on, on how effective masks are or are not, and I think it is something that could change, and, you know, I certainly would, if, if that guidance changes, I would, would change, you know, the instruction to Village employees.
Even in my workplace, they're targeting the end of July, just for company policy. And I don't know what they're basing it off of, and I don't know where they're getting their, their number or what their projection is from, but that's what they've been telling us for about the last two weeks. Trustee Baum.
The requirement for the mask is when you're within six feet of each other, is it not? That's when it's more important.
No, we, they keep us at what they consider social distance at six feet, even sitting in our work areas.
Cubicles.
And, uh, the mask is required at all times while you're on, uh, work premise.
And that is your employee, what does the Washington County Health Department have to say? Same thing, or is it when you're six feet away, the mask is less necessary? Or is not necessary?
I would say my interpretation of what Washington County said, and it is, it's, it's not entirely clear, to, to be very candid about it. My interpretation is that when you're not, when you're not able to be at least six feet away, that then, that then you wear the mask.
Okay. So in this room, you position the chairs so that everybody is six feet away, so therefore, we should not have to wear the masks?
Chairs are a little close to you. I'm delirious.
Back it up.
I would, I wish I would have brought a tape of, you know, we're talking about Washington County's blueprint for us.
Yeah.
You can go online and watch Washington County's board meetings.
They're sitting next to each other.
They're sitting next to each other. They're shaking hands. They're changing positions at the podium. Nobody at the podium is ever wearing a mask. Nobody, nobody in the room is wearing a mask. The last meeting, there was two, uh, people from the public that were, and I'm okay with somebody that wants to wear a mask. And like I said, the first meeting, only one supervisor. So this is bizarre to me that we're following Washington County's recommendations, okay, do this, and they're not doing it, and I can't find another community that's doing what we're doing.
And if, if we're staying six feet apart, I don't see the risk. I don't see the problem.
Further discussion? We're talking about meetings only, not within the workplace. It would still be...
It would still be masks as required by the village administrator during normal work hours. We're talking about the exclusion at all village hall-based committee or village board meetings. Any further discussion? Attorney, village attorney.
I'm going to look at trustee Hudson first, because he's more important.
Trustee Hudson, I didn't see him over there. How can you tell? Because he's not wearing a mask. Trustee Hudson.
So just a quote from the CDC website. "In light of this new evidence, CDC recommends wearing cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, e.g., grocery stores and pharmacies, especially in areas of significant community-based transmission." I would say that's an argument for not wearing masks. Or at least having the choice. This is from the CDC's website.
Do you think we should social distance then? Is it they said social distancing?
Yeah, I think so, yes, I think we should social distance. Absolutely, yes, I think we should. That's my personal opinion.
Further discussion.
And that was effectively going to be my comment, is that, wow, while Washington County, I think, is maybe the unusual one in that trustee Wing is correct, they are all sitting side by side, you know, nothing has changed there. Menominee Falls, on the other hand, they are spread. They are socially distanced in Menominee Falls, so when they don't wear masks, they're also complying with the social distance requirement. There are many communities that are still utilizing only virtual meetings at this point, so it's...
But it looks like only the communities that you're a lawyer for. I noticed Meckwan was doing virtual meetings, and then I saw you sitting there, and I said, oh, this might explain something. Are you a lawyer for Menards?
No. So, yes, two of my communities do, in fact, still do virtual meetings, although that is not, I don't have any role there at all in terms of the meetings and what's going on. You know, I think that the key for me is always what I go back to what we talked about at the last meeting, which is the concern about potential liability, that if we have somebody that gets sick because of something that happened here, that that's a concern. Now, you can point to this room and say, look, everybody's six feet apart, there's not a problem, we should let them have the choice to do that. And as it relates to meetings, maybe that's true. Although I do worry that, you know, I look at the agenda, and other than this topic, there's not a whole lot of controversy on the agenda tonight. We may, at the next meeting, have something where 75 people are going to want to be in this room, and we're going to have to make the call. Do we punt on it because we're not going to fit all of them in the room? Or do we break the social distancing discussion and allow all of those people in the room? And so that's the concern that I have, is just that liability. And while I'm not as concerned about it at the meetings, because we are still utilizing the virtual aspect of what we're doing here, you know, we are social distancing to the extent that we can, at least with members of the public, that's the concern that I have, is just that. And I think where you go out in the public and you see, even places that don't require masks, a lot of the employees are still wearing masks. And so that, to me, is an indication that it's not just me thinking that there's liability and those types of concerns, but that there's lots of other business-related attorneys that are out there thinking, geez, this could be a liability for us. And so that's where my mindset is, is just preventing that liability. And it's one thing for us to say to employees, you guys need to do it while you're interacting with the public, maybe here in the meeting. It's a little bit different when it's just you folks sitting up here, and, you know, there's no direct interaction with a member of the public. It's slightly different, so.
Further discussion. Trustee Piper.
Yeah, just one question. Have you known of any other villages, towns, or anywhere else where there has been a lawsuit or any liability against the village or town because they were not wearing masks or somebody contracted COVID, that they were able to prove that they were, like, the village was actually at fault?
I am not aware of any, but I'm also not aware of any businesses that have been sued for that either. And so it's, at this point, one of those things that we're at the very front end of where this stuff is. Will there be? My guess is probably. I think you're right, that there is going to be a very huge burden in terms of where did you actually contract the disease, and that's going to make it tough for folks to do it. But there will be lawyers that bring those types of lawsuits. I'm certain of it.
So on the spectrum of liability, where would you say that that liability lies with Germantown right now?
Well, I mean...
If you did not require masks and 75 people showed up, on that spectrum of liability, would we be very liable, not so much liable?
As things sit today, probably a little bit higher of a potential liability. If they were able to trace a case that was here that they were then exposed to, because our cases are pretty low municipal-wide, if things were different and there were cases all over the community, you know, that's a different story. And so, you know, it's going to fluctuate day to day, week to week, you know, depending on where you're at. And so that's why, you know, I think you're still seeing a lot of the employers out in the public sector, you know, still requiring their employees to wear masks, because I think there is some concern that, you know, they're worried about that. And also, I think to administrative crackles' point, that I do think that, you know, there are some components of our public that kind of look to and expect that type of behavior and action. There's a whole lot of them that are probably going to snicker and laugh, you know, I can't believe he's wearing a mask, but, you know, I think that the ones that are truly concerned are going to be looking for that type of behavior.
Further discussion. Trustee Kaminski.
I will say, if 75 people did show up in this room without masks, I would go home and do this online. I wouldn't take that chance. You don't know where these people are from. And yes, we should be socially distanced here. We really should be. Firstly, every other place I go, every other business I walk into, they are six feet apart, whether it's standing in line for something, I've been going out and eating in restaurants, the tables are like 10 feet apart, and all the waitresses are wearing masks. So, I mean, that's kind of the norm protocol now, whether we like it or not, whether we agree with it or not. I don't walk into a restaurant with a mask on, but I'm aware of what's happening around me, I'm aware of where my hands are, and I'm not touching my face. I am maintaining that type of protocol. And seriously, if we had another issue in here like we did with the, whoever remembers the garbage and recycling, where this place was standing room only, I'd be out of here so fast. Why would I take that chance? Why would I? I don't know these people, and we're not socially distanced. Like I said, we should try to achieve that even on this board, if we're not going to wear masks. We really should. And if somebody wants to sit real close together, they can go do that. If I want to be six feet apart, that's what I want to do.
When the four of you go out to lunch together?
I've never gone out. Two people I've gone out with cross the table from each other. Somebody I know.
Six with you.
Yeah, somebody, a friend I know or a family member, I have no trouble with that. But some stranger I don't know, why would I want to sit next to them?
Circle of five.
That's why you go to, like, a lot of bars. I mean, I know at the club that we went to to play golf, all the bar chairs are gone. They won't even let you sit at a bar anymore at some of these places. And the tables were like, you couldn't even talk to the person, the table was so far away. Golf carts, one person per cart unless you're, it's a family member. I mean, it's, social distancing is huge everywhere.
You need to hang around in Germantown more often.
Yeah.
Because...
Not one person's wearing masks.
I mean, come out with me and Jolene one night, and you're going to find out that they're not wearing masks in bars.
I don't care.
And they're not, I mean, we're talking about Germantown here. This is the discussion. My experience has been much different than yours.
Good. I was just going to comment that you made the point exact, that if this room was full of 75 people and we were packed in here, that you wouldn't feel comfortable with it, and you would come in through via web MX.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So honestly, I think that's where it all comes down to. If people aren't comfortable being in a room of 75 people cramped, they will show up via web MX, via phone call or video. And it's all, comes down to somebody's comfort point. If somebody feels comfortable with coming in, they can. If somebody doesn't feel comfortable, they don't need to wear a mask. It's an individual choice, I believe.
I think it's really funny that we're having this conversation about masks. We're going to laugh at this, hopefully, like a year from now, that this, what an insane conversation this is. But for now, it's like, I'm like, who cares? Wear one if you want to, don't if you don't. But social distancing, to me, is more the key in here, if we're together without masks.
Further discussion. Trustee Miller.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting into personal opinions here, and that's not what it's really about. I mean, I'm one of those that sat at a table of eight and had dinner last Saturday night, so that's my personal opinion, right? I don't care about wearing a mask. However, and I think I'm okay with this at meetings, but I still think the authority needs to lie with the administrator on daily operations. So I will not support that. I will support it tonight for the meetings.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, raise your hands. Want to oppose? Motion carries.
Do we want to go further and discuss?
Do we want to go further and discuss their role in the office?
No.
Who we're fine with? Okay.
No, because that's another hour. And it's not that it's not worth that, but I think that starts to ebb away at the authority of the administrator.
I think it's totally his authority, which is why I'm voting no.
Anything else for old business item A, in regards to revisit, rescind a portion thereof of the resolution, as was asked by trustee Baum and now myself? If there's nothing else, we'll go to old business item B, which is the status of the 2020 Budget Savings Plan, Resolution 41-2020, directing the village administrator to implement 2020 budget savings plans. Steve.
All right. As requested by the village board, I'm coming back for a monthly update on where we are. I promise this will not be anywhere near as controversial, and the slides are color-coded, so those should be positives. Just two quick slides here. First of all, looking at our revenues, and I went back to the original presentation that I gave, talking about where we could have revenue shortfalls in village funds. And the first one is hotel tax, and I color-coded that yellow, as we really don't know any more than we did a month ago. I think when we get to mid-July, the finance director and I should be able to give you a more thorough estimate of what that looks like, when we start getting second quarter numbers from the hotels. But at this point, best estimate is still a $100,000 to $200,000 revenue loss. On the other hand, under inspection permit and fees, there estimated $100,000 to $200,000 revenue loss. As of the end of May, we're actually slightly ahead of where we were last year. We're still seeing permits coming through and requests for inspection. We're not out of the woods yet. I think that even though the numbers are looking better than we thought they might, the second half of the year, we still are basically counting on another large-scale commercial industrial building and some additional residential development, but those numbers are looking like they're more on the positive side than on the negative side. Recreation program is yellow as well, and there again, it's just a little early to really provide any new information on that. The rec staff have been working very hard to get as many programs up and running as they can, finding facilities, making sure they're able to, you know, meet the safety requirements that are in place. And they've seen registration coming in at lower than what normal levels would be, but they are getting people signing up for programs. And again, I think probably in another month or so, we'll be able to give a little bit better estimate there. And then under miscellaneous, those are things like earnings on investments. Those are actually looking a little bit better than we thought back in March and April, so color-coded those green. So I left the overall revenue gap in yellow. You know, we're still early in the process, we're watching things as closely as we can. I'd say, if, you know, if you were pushing me to give an indication of where we might end up, it's very, very tentative, but I'd say we're trending more towards the direction of a $475,000 shortfall rather than the $925,000 shortfall. So with that, if there are any questions on revenues, I'll move on to the expense side.
Any questions? No? Okay.
And here, just briefly, we also presented a budgetary plan at a May meeting, and we're on track for those items. We've, we're on track with the salary savings. The one thing that I would, just other note that I would make on the salary savings, included in that was some savings from two furlough days. One to be implemented in the third quarter and one to be implemented in the fourth quarter. And the village board gave me the discretion to go ahead and implement those. At this point, I don't believe the one for the third quarter is necessary, based on where we are in salary savings and some of the positive trends that we're seeing in revenues. So my intention at this point is not to ask staff to take that furlough day in the third quarter. We also are, I think, on track for the other savings, equipment, maintenance and savings, sealed coating program, and obviously, the use of reserves is something that'll be decided by the village board at the end of the year. So I think we're on track from that perspective. And we'll continue to monitor the information, and I'll be back, I'll have this item back up in July to give you a further update.
Okay, any questions? No? All right, and that takes care of all items under old business item B, so we'll go then on to new business. We start new business with the license renewals of all premise liquor license recommendations approvals to be conditional upon completion of all documentation, compliance of all code violations requirements, and monies owed to the village paid prior to issuance of licenses in addition to any other conditions noted.
Motion to approve new business A 1 through 25.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve new business item A listed of 1 through 25. Discussion on that motion to approve. Not even on 15? I'm just kidding. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye abstain.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Make a motion to approve renewals for Class B fermented beverages and Class C wine licenses 1 through 3.
Motion made and seconded to approve new business item B listed as items 1 through 3. Any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Make a motion to approve item C, number 1, for Class B winery license and Class B fermented beverage.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve item C, number 1. Any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Make a motion to approve item D, number 1, for Class C wine license.
Motion made and seconded to approve new business item D listed as 1. Any discussion on that motion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Make a motion to approve letter E on a new business 1 through 9.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve new business item E listed as items 1 through 9. Discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Next item.
Make a motion to approve Item F for renewals of Class A fermented beverages, including cider and license for 1 and 2.
Second? Motion made and seconded to approve Items F 1 and 2. Any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Motion to approve G for Items 1 and 2, as presented.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Trustees able?
No. The only two were premises.
That's, I was kind of amazed at.
This is correct. These were the only two that requested a premise extension through the end of this licensing year, through June 30th of 2020. So it says on here through June 30th of 2020, and the portion they requested is underlined.
Okay, so it's a short, mental.
Correct. Correct. That's why this is different.
The other licenses that were granted for these places go back on July 1st and continue through with the outside premises because part of the license is scripted?
Yeah, correct.
As normally listed, correct? What would be approved outdoor extensions for those businesses currently?
Well, I think it's on the license itself.
It is.
Yeah, but currently, they don't have this additional footage.
So unless we pass this additional footage, they would have to wait till July 1st.
That is correct. Yep. This is just through the end of this June.
Right. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve New Business H.
Second? Motion made and seconded to approve New Business Item H. You're not even gonna let John talk?
No. Nope. Man's been waiting so patient.
Trustee on the road, he did show up. He said, yes.
Any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John. Next item on our new business is Item I. Presentation by Public Administration Associates Public Works Department Organizational Review. I'll turn some.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Administrator, are we going to be voting on this tonight?
I am not making any specific recommendations or requests from the board tonight. This was an opportunity for Chris Schwartz from PAA to come and provide the results of their review and analysis. And I've had a couple of meetings since we did receive the report with the Public Works management team, and I plan to have some additional conversations with them before we come back with some recommendations.
So we probably will not vote on this tonight, which I would rather we did not.
Correct.
Would those recommendations come through Public Works Committee or straight to this board?
I would think it would be appropriate to take them through committee.
Okay. All right. Do I introduce or?
I can introduce Chris Schwartz. And, you know, one of the things is Chris is coming to the podium, and I don't know if you were planning to talk about your background, but I just want to mention that Chris is a longtime administrator from Shorewood, as well as Sussex and some other places. So he came into this with a great deal of experience and, you know, understanding from, you know, administration and communities, much like Germantown.
Thank you. I do have hard copies if anybody wants them. I miscalculated, I thought seven. People was on board at this time. So if anyone would like our copies, I'll have them out. Sure. Okay.
Chris.
Thank you.
Michelle was controlling the car park for the car. There's somebody helping you with that. Do you want to?
Oh, I'm. Okay. Oh, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
My name is, thank you, trustee, very much. My name is Chris Schwartz, public administration associate. Our firm has been around since 1998. I'm Steve Hins, the principal of the firm, who is a professor of management. Oh. How's that?
Perfect.
Kevin Brunner bought the firm in 2018. His last job was the county of Walworth, Public Works Director, Highway Commissioner. Steve, I'm sorry, Dave Burns, he's a partner with us now. He was a 30-year administrator, last one with Walworth County, and myself. As Steve says, I've been 35-year village manager and administrator, and we now are retired, and we're trying to get back to the profession. One way we do it is through studies and inter-management and things of that sort. So I'm currently doing the inter-management in Johnson Creek. So I've heard about COVID. We do that every meeting. So Steve asked us to do a 10,000-foot review of the Public Works Department. Again, it's 10,000 feet. We didn't go into the details. We didn't, you know, look at the creases. We didn't look at the nuts and bolts necessarily. We looked at the 10,000-foot view of the organization. We looked, as the first slide, we looked at the structure of the organization. We read through the job descriptions. We looked somewhat at the operational processes, and we wanted to provide recommendations for improving the organizational efficiency and effectiveness of the department, if we had any recommendations, which we do have some. Is the next slide?
Michelle, so if you could say next slide, shall I?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Michelle. We thought this analysis is very timely because you have two key vacancies right now, the engineer and the engineering tech. So you have identified infrastructure maintenance and expansion as a priority in the organization. So this study is very timely for that, and you are expanding residential and commercial development. You know, according to some of the findings of your initial comprehensive plan, you're going to grow quite a bit the next 10 years. Even though we have a little slowdown, the predictions are, this is not, it's a temporary, not going to be long-term. So you're going to continue to grow. Unless we have some real problems, but I don't think so. So your strategic priorities, I thought it was very important when I just list what your priorities are. Is it a strategic plan, Steve, that was done? So I think when you look at any plan, look at what you think are your long-term strategic priorities, and I state them here. Next slide. How we do these studies, and we've done quite a few in the last year, is we find the interviews are very important with the administrator, the DPW director, who's key, the key public work staff, superintendent, things of that sort, assistant engineer, we obviously don't have an engineer, and we, the public works committee members that were here before April. Remember, we're a little late in this because of the COVID. We kind of took about a month break, so we're a little later. So we talked to some of the trustees who are now not on the board. We looked at all your policies and procedures, which you've had, you know, some of them. You don't have all of them in all aspects, but we reviewed what you had. We looked at your planning documents, your capital budgets, and we surveyed other villages and cities with similar characteristics, because we think we've got to like to find the best practices. Is there anything out there that, you know, hey, that really works well and why? So we did that as well. Some of your recent initiatives, just so you know, you've done the road pacer analysis, which is really going to help you inform the capital improvement process. You're updating the 2020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I don't know if that's done, Steve, but you're, you know, you're doing that, and you're working on establishing a more robust capital improvement plan. So you, the village board has some strategic initiatives in place, as do your staff. So your current organization, I think you know this, you have the details of our plan, you know, the village administrator, the director of public works directs, is directly under the village administrator, and then you have all of the village engineer and the superintendents are under the public works director. So that's kind of your current organizational chart. Next slide. Some of the peer communities we looked at were Cedarburg, Hudson, Pleasant Prairie, Hartford, Middleton, Mont Pleasant, Economewalk. Thought they were similar to you, so we wanted to check out what their organizations were like. We interviewed their administrator, if they had one, and their public works director. What worked, what doesn't work there? What does your organization look like? So some of the things we found, and we knew this, but we wanted, you know, these are the typical public works organizations. You have the administrator as here, then you have, that person supervises director of public works slash village engineer, so it's kind of the combination. And then you have separate departments. You have the assistant village engineer for engineering operations, and then the assistant director of public works for operations. Kind of what you have, but not exactly. But it's close. The organizational B, this one, we found, the administrator, there really is, the director of public works and the village engineer directly is under the auspices of the administrator. So there's no middle person, so to speak. So it's a little bit less heavy on the management, if you will. Next, so thank you. And then there's a real different one that a lot of communities really, you know, use, is that you have the public works totally separate from the engineering department. You have a community development director where the engineer is under that, that person, which is really a different scheme. You don't see it all the time, but as they get larger, a lot of communities have that. You're going fast, Michelle. That's all right. I'll catch up. I know, Michelle. So some of the things we wanted to do, and again, this is a 10,000-foot view, and I'm, this presentation is a 10,000-foot view, over 10,000-foot view. So I wanted to be succinct. One of the things we wanted to do, based on all the interviews, and, you know, is one of the things, we, three things. Strengthen the public works leadership, including administrative responsibilities and interdepartmental communications. That was, we felt was very important when we look at alternatives, organizations. Strengthen resources required to complete annual capital improvement projects. Strengthen the resources to establish and implement standing operating procedures. Some of the things we wanted to see. So how do we, what are some of our recommended, we give you a few alternatives, alternatives based on our reviews, and the status quo works good. Your organization is not broken at all, the way you organize. It's not broken at all, and you can continue to do that, to have your status quo, your current organization. We think some minor adjustments. We think maybe the village engineer position should include specific responsibility for construction management. So your engineering department, if you hire them, you would maybe emphasize construction management and maybe de-emphasize construction management for your current public works director. The public works director position should emphasize operational leadership, not construction management, as I just said. And the superintendent position should emphasize human resource management and administration in addition to their regular operational management. We think that, you know, some, you know, as far as reviews, performance reviews, maybe, you know, put that into the hands of the superintendents rather than the public works director. A little bit more direct. And you do that somewhat, but it's, maybe refine that system. So the alternative one to the status quo is similar to some of the other communities where you have the public works director, but then you separate, the public works director supervises the village engineer and construction manager, and the assistant public works director in operations. So we think this one is a little bit of a tweak from the status quo, but it's not a huge, what we did is we took the superintendent and made them the assistant public works director of operations, so that you have some more on-the-boots supervision, but in a little bit of a bigger, a broader administrative responsibilities. Alternative two, and I don't know if Steve likes this one, because he's kind of the direct, everyone reports to him, there's no middle person. As we talked, we saw that in the, in the, one of the peer communities. You have the village administrator, then you have the director of operations, director of utilities, and the village engineer, construction manager. Kind of a hybrid here. We heard a lot from the staff that the utilities need some specific directions, specific engineers, engineering expertise, or operational expertise that was lost. Again, I don't know this, but what I hear is you used to have an engineering, a utilities engineer back, back in the day, which I don't, I didn't confirm, I didn't look, but I've heard that from enough people to assume that is true. So really, the administrator would have the direct reports, director of operations, director of utilities, and the village engineer, and, you know, the regular staff. And then we also broke this down for technical recommendations. So we have the organizational recommendations or alternatives, and now we have the, and they're not that complicated, but we think they would add, adding an asset management system, which would better inventory and age all of your infrastructure. It's very typical, and you have a lot of the basic data to do this. It just needs to be organized in a systematic way. And there are programs through your financial software and others that you can do that. We don't sell that, just so you know, not, can sell anything like that. Assure more comprehensive use of the GIS system. You have a great GIS system here. Just really, but it's just because of the time required to manage the data and complete the data that goes into there, into the GIS system. I think you need to figure out how you're going to have, use it more, and, for example, assure that your ASBILs are up to date in there from construction projects. It's done, but not on a regular basis, again, according to the interviews. Look at amending the job description to the engineer technician, maybe make them a GIS specialist, maybe make them more of a construction manager. You used to have two, Steve, is that right, two engineering techs, and now you're down to?
Actually, at this point, the one position we have is vacant.
So, and maybe add to that. You notice you didn't have a safety officer, someone who's really responsible for the safety operations of the, of the public works department. And that's not, you don't need a new position, but someone needs the authority to implement a safety program. It's kind of done on a, you know, wide basis, and maybe a little bit more specific basis in one person. You're working on this one, the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. It's good, but you need to add utilities into it, maybe a little bit, 10 to 15 years, a little longer, and a little bit more comprehensive. Your asset management system will help that. One thing that was not confusing, but we found that we didn't see, you know, what is designed from an engineering standpoint in-house by your in-house staff? And what is outside? What do outside consultants design? There wasn't, there was some kind of, you know, guidelines, but I think really reviewing that is going to be important about future staffing levels. You know, a lot of folks are going away from in-house design, just because it's getting more difficult, and a lot of the engineering firms can do it more efficiently and effectively, especially if it's being charged back to maybe a capital improvement program or some, or a developer, things of that sort. So I think you should look at that type of policy. A development review team? You have a very informal one. A development review team, you have a very informal one. A formal development team will include the administrator, the planner, the engineer, the highway superintendent, your water utility superintendent. So when you review new plats or new subdivision plans, you have a really comprehensive view of what that is for recommendations, to make sure everyone has input into that. And I think that's done, but maybe on a more formal basis you need to do that, or you can look at that, and Steve is something maybe might find helpful. There's really no specific policy in operations manual. There are some aspects of it, but really, what are your DPW policies? What are your operations? What are the, how, what are the, what can I say, the metrics of how, of the effectiveness of that, of your public works operations? What is the details? How do you do, what is, when you do a subdivision, what are the steps to get to the end? When you do a major project, what are the steps? So you don't miss any steps on that, the lastly being final review, final ASBILs into the GIS system. So it's just kind of a manual is what we're looking for. Very few people have them in the public works. It's very complex, but I think that's something you can start working on. And when you hire the village engineer, find that you include the supervisor staff, trustee. So really look at your process of hiring a village engineer, that it's, the whole, all your department, including trustees, and maybe some line staff as well. I think that makes, and talk to Steve about this too, you know, and that came from some of the interviews as well. And then make performance evaluations in the department of public works a management priority. Get time, and it just has not been kind, you're so busy, they haven't been done on a regular basis, though it has been improving according to the interviews. So I know I spoke fast, but I wanted to get through this quickly and so you can have some time for questions. But your, your system is, is, is good. You have a great staff, a really, you know, you meet the expectations of the public works committees for the most part, a very positive review, but I think some tweaking in the, in the organization is, is, is good at this point. And in this recommendations, we have a timeframe, and then we leave a priority slot for that. So if you want to, either the board, the public works, Steve's staff, what are these priorities? And we can't do all of this, but when are these maybe a priority? So I have that kind of worksheet for you. So that's all I have. 10,000-foot level. Hope I didn't speak too fast.
Questions?
Looking at it, I just have a few questions, but I think a lot of those questions should be taken up in public works because I do agree that the situation we have here is probably manageable, a few little tweaks to it will probably work. Changing the hiring of the village engineer change, means we have to change our codes because the codes spell out how it's done. So we have to do that to change that procedure. But I do know that we should be moving relatively quick to fill the position of the village engineer and the engineering tech, because I do agree that, that we do have projects that are sitting out there that do need to get addressed and set it, put in on one person running around in circles all day trying to find out which one he's, which fire he's going to put out first.
Trustee Baum.
20,000-foot question. Why did this come up? Are we having problems, or is it just because we're missing two people right now?
Missing two people.
That's it. I think the guys are doing a great job. I kind of was shocked that we're trying to reorganize them, which...
We were just looking at a century loss of village engineer, the tent retired and this stuff, and maybe it's time to look at the organization instead of just replacing.
Okay.
I would, I would just add to that, and I, I agree. I think the staff is doing a great job, and I think things are, are going well. But I do think that, that one other component of it is that the, the demands that are placed on the department have changed a lot over the past few years, and this is, it's in the report, and I, I probably should have thought to suggest it be in the presentation as well, but, you know, the amount of the capital budget has grown significantly, and that's, that's increased the demands both on, you know, on the, the public works director, the, the village engineer, the inspectors, and the relationships with the department. And I think that was part of, part of the reason as well, kind of looking at, at all of those factors and saying, does, you know, are there tweaks that are necessary to the existing organization to adjust for some of that larger demand and the larger workload?
But part of that, though, and others, you have to join in the human resources. With them being union contracts, do we have a human resource, or have they decided to fold their union contracts? Because you don't have performance evaluations on, on union employees.
And I think, when I, when I hear that, that conversation, and I think where that came up in the interviews, and I, I did read through the, you know, the anonymously, the notes from, from all of the interviews to see what the feedback was from, from staff. I think a lot of that was, was related to the non-union staff and just some of the overarching, like, direction and, you know, strategic approach. You know, one of the examples that I think came up is, you know, having an organization where, you know, the public works director is kind of the, the general manager, the Ron Wolf, and the, the next level down are the, you know, the, the coaches, and then you have the players, and, and the general manager is kind of looking more at the big picture, putting in place some of the, the policies and procedures, and giving kind of that overall guidance and direction.
Trustee Kaminski.
I know when this all started back earlier this, earlier this year, or was it late last year? I can't even recall, on the public works committee, it was actually spawned by the need to hire a new village engineer, because we said we've been losing them rapidly over the past six years. So that's where my head was at on all of this, is how is our new village engineer going to come out of this? What are we going to pay that village engineer? Are we not paying the village engineer adequately? Why are they leaving? Why can't we hang on to one? What do we have to do to change that? And that's kind of mentally where I was partially coming from on this at the very beginning. I personally, I don't know, I'm obviously not qualified as our village manager is, but I think our departments have been working pretty well, and, I mean, the way they're, they're set up currently, except we have a hard time hanging on to a village engineer. Why is that? Is because, is it because our structure is all wrong? Is because we're not paying enough? I guess that's kind of where, I still don't have the answer to that question.
Trustee Myers.
I would echo your statements, Terry, and for ours also. And your firm doesn't go into the basis in regard for pay for these particular positions?
That wasn't within our scope, but we had a good conversation with Steve, Kevin and I about some of those matters. We also had an engineer help us out just for some of those matters, a man named Stoffler Mier, who, you know, kind of looked at the, the market for engineers to help us, really just through conversations with Steve. It wasn't part of the report, but we had that conversation and gave him some ideas up.
But you could offer something in regard to, to that aspect of what we're paying, and what we should be paying, according to some of the other things you're talking about, changes?
I think you're paying, it's really the public sector, you know, you can pay a little less. But the demand where we were at, if I may, Steve, where we were at is that the, the private sector takes a lot of engineers home, and the demand for private engineers is just really high these days. So, you know, and they pay them. So that kind of hurts the public sector, and not just you. Many folks are having, many communities are having that same pressure. Now, we see with this little blip in the economy, it may be a good time to go out right now, because some of the engineering firms are starting to write off. So that's another thing, we talked to Steve, that, you know, this is maybe a good time because demand is really down. But your pay, I think, is, we saw it close to other municipalities. You didn't see it too off, well, too low. But for the private sector, you have a division.
I understand that, but keeping in mind how we, the last two engineers that we had, the last two years, and maybe they were ready to go even before the two years is up. One of the things I was going to ask you, Steve, was under old business, when you were talking about the status of the budget saving, did you, did you plan to include not hiring an engineer for this year?
No, actually, those savings included the position being vacant through June. So we, we can go forward that process. And, you know, if I, I'll kind of just add on to some of the previous comments, and I think there's a lot of reasons. I don't think there's a single reason, as we've gone through, about the, the turnover in engineers. I, I will say that one of the things I, that I thought was very helpful in the report, and as we talked about, as, as we've had some meetings with the, the DPW management team, is going into the process with thinking more clearly than maybe we did the last time. I can't speak for the time before that, with what the roles would be between the, the different people, and, and making sure that we hire the right person for that role. And I, I think in, you know, in retrospect, maybe we didn't do that the, the last time. We, and it is, you know, it, it can be difficult to, to find the right person, but I think that it's very important that, that we define what the roles are and then get the right people in the right spots. And, and that, that is one of the things that I, I think will help us to hang on to these folks a little longer.
I would agree, agree with your last statement, Steve, in regard to that aspect. A lot of engineers, basically speaking, specialize in certain areas. You don't have the old type person who's very rounded in different aspects, and we need to identify what those positions, you need to identify what those positions are, and then, and then put that in the criteria in regard to hiring somebody. But I think Larry's got too much on his plate right now, and the sooner we get an engineer, the better it is, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
I appreciate the, the recommendations and the overall view. When I, when I'm looking at this staffing and how we are structured currently and what your alternatives are, it almost appears that you push another management level in between. And the people that are currently at superintendent of, or water superintendent are at a certain pay grade, and based on the recommendation of alternative one or two, that pay grade isn't going to change, but you're pushed another layer of management in between where they are and where either the administrator is or the public works director is. That almost adds cost.
You don't have, there is some of that, there's no doubt, especially when you add the utilities director in there, that's, that is true.
It's flattening the structure, but at the same time, you're, you're adding a layer.
You could, though, it is true, but you could tweak it so you're, and again, I want to talk, this is just structure, not individuals. You could make the superintendent the director, give him more broader work, and have the foreman do a little bit more and expand that role. So you can do it in the existing organization without hiring folks. We talked about that, but I, I didn't go into that detail, but Steve and I did talk about that flattening, and we took out the public works director in, in one thing, which would take a layer off, off as well. So I think on both sides, we did that.
I think it's something to consider as you start looking at the structure layouts going forward in, in regards to what, what, you know, what their job descriptions are based on where we are and, and where it goes to, because it just takes where you have superintendent across that top view and moves them down a layer. So it's something to consider in, in discussions.
And we didn't do the cost analysis. That's something we did, wasn't in the scope, but I know Steve has done some of that stuff.
A few.
Trustee Wang.
Speaking about costs, you had mentioned a safety person, safety coordinator. I know in the industry I'm in, when we had brought on safety coordinators, our insurance premiums went down.
Does that happen in, in municipalities?
Based on experience, and so if that person makes such an impact on your worker's comp, you know, on, on some liability things, yes, it could. I mean, if you have a 0.80 rate ratio to 1.23, that's a lot of money, you know? But I, I didn't, I didn't put a new position in it, I just said coordination in an existing position, because I, I mean, I don't think the safety, that's maybe overkill, but it can save money.
Yeah, no, I understand you'd move somebody into that position to take the responsibility of setting up safety programs.
It helps.
Any other questions? No other questions, comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you hiring us, and, well, Steve and I have continued to talk. It's part of the service, is that we're there during implementation if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Next item under new business is item J, ordinance 08-2020, and ordinance amending section 12. 151 subsection 4 of the Germantown Municipal Code relating to the appeal of vicious dog determinations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This came through Public Safety.
It did. It was just a, I guess, a typo that was found during some recent activity, and chapter six should be changed to chapter 20. That's really the only change. On section one, paragraph four.
And what is...
That's it?
That's it.
That is it. Chapter six literally has nothing to do with appeal procedures at all, and so it was, no. And so it clearly was probably my predecessor who had copied a version from somebody else and just didn't update the right code reference.
Okay. We have motion. Okay, further discussion. Trustee Baum, you had your hand up?
No.
Had answered it?
I don't like 20, I'm 121 instead.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Not opposed? Motion carries. Takes care of all items listed on tonight's agenda before we adjourn.
Mr. President?
Yes, trustee Zabel.
I just want to point out one thing. I know we approved the, for Kiwanis to have the pitney license for the Taste of Germantown, but we didn't mention that, what it was. I just want to let the general public know that Taste of Germantown will be in effect, and it will go on, on July 23rd at Fireman's Park. We didn't state that. We approved it, but let the people know that indeed the Taste of Germantown is still planned and scheduled to go.
On July 23rd from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Very good. Thank you. Before we adjourn, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, July 6th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching, and have a good night. We're adjourned.